of the McAllister City Council, we do have a quorum. We have Pastor Rusty McMullen from First Baptist Church here to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the religious beings, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray together.
Father God, we come before you now and we just want to offer up this time to you. We ask that you would work among us, Father, that you would give clear thoughts, clear speech, Father, that you would help us to communicate well what we desire to communicate. Pray that you would continue to watch over our city council and our mayor, Father, and all those who are represented by the city government of McAllister. I pray that you'd give them clarity and direction, Father, as they continue to lead us. I pray, Father, that you would watch over their words tonight, Father, and help us just to see your hand at work and accomplish the things you desire for us to accomplish. We praise you for all these things and it's in Jesus's name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. It's time for recognition and awards and I'm actually going to move to the podium and allow our recipient to come up and sit in the mayor's seat.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
This proclamation, I read about JP in the newspaper and some of the things that has been going on with him. And Sean Howard, who was a friend of mine, I contacted him and talked to him a little bit about it. And I thought it might be pretty neat if we could do a proclamation for him. So here goes with the reading and I'm going to apologize because there's a pretty good chance I'm going to mispronounce some of the medical term. Whereas JP was born on April 4th, 2016, in Muskogee, Oklahoma, to parents, Dr. and Mrs. John V. Tedesco. And whereas, born with multiple congenital heart defects, undetected in utero, JP was quickly flown via helicopter to St. Francis Hospital days later by playing the St. I feel that way sometimes. Days later by playing to St. Louis Children's Hospital where they were determined the severity of his condition. And whereas JP was diagnosed with transposition of the great arteries, mitral valve, atric fusion, multiple septal defect, supplemonic stenosis, and septal hypertrophy. My cusp at aortic valve, borderline hypoplastic left and borderline pulmonary hypertension. And whereas, leading the nation in pediatric heart care, the decision was made to take JP to Boston Children's Hospital for the arterial switch and valvular surgeries. And whereas, after enduring multiple open heart surgeries, heart attacks, heart catheterizations, blood transfusions, and nearly six months in ICU, JP was lifelighted again to recover at St. Francis, Tulsa. And whereas, his current condition is left heart and vascular dysfunction due to a heart attack after his second open heart surgery. And whereas, he will be undergoing his third open heart procedure in the upcoming months to replace the valve, he has outgrown and resect scar tissue in his heart. And whereas, today JP is a thriving three-year-old living in McAllister, Oklahoma. He loves playing with his little brother Antonio and big sister Eva. And whereas, when you meet JP, you won't see his scars. You certainly would never know how hard he fought for his life. However, you can see his vibrant personality and sweet, loving spirit. And therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim August 13th, 2019, as JP Tedesco Day in the City of McAllister. Signed this day, August 2019. All right, do it.
Antonio.
He said Antonio is next.
Nice to meet you. Do you want to piss bump in the balalaika?
I need.
He needs.
I need.
Okay, look at the camera.
Cheese.
I need.
Yeah, I can go next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
JP?
I'm sorry. Those are the fun things we get to do.
Yeah.
I should give a little good deal there.
I vote we keep the rest of the meeting fine.
That works for me. All right, we are on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that's not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. And council requested that comments be limited to five minutes. I don't have the clipboard. Did anyone sign up? No one signed up? Is anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move to the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. Tonight, the agenda consists of A, approval of minutes from the July 23rd, 2019, regular meeting of the McAllister City Council. B, approval of claims for July 17th, 2019 through August 6th, 2019. C, acceptance place on file of the McAllister Defense Support Association Quarterly Report. D, concurred with the mayor's nomination of Robert Johnston, City Manager, Frederick, Oklahoma, or trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund as an at-large trustee and authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution, cast the vote in support of this nomination. E, accept and place on file the Pride and McAllister Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. Anyone like anything removed? Take a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Motion, counsel Brown. Second, Councilwoman Harrison, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to a public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the City Charter. Tonight, the hearing is an ordinance of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending ordinance number 2656, which established the budget for fiscal year 2019-20, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability clause, and declaring an emergency. Take a motion in a second to open the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion, Counselman Brown. Second, Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Counselman Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, so we're now in the public hearing. If anyone would like to approach, address. Now, seeing no one, I take a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Motion, Counselman Brown. Second, Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Counselman Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number one, consider an act upon an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2656, which established the budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability clause, declaring an emergency. Ms. Irvin?
Mayor, council. Exhibit A1, what we're doing now is budget, this is a budget supplements to lapse and reappropriate expenditures for capital projects from last year that have not been completed. The ones that are listed here are the Harvest Park and Connolly Parks. And in A2, it's also to lapse and reappropriate expenditures from the previous fiscal year. And these are our infrastructure projects from the infrastructure fund. Are there any questions?
Where is the lift stations at? Where are we? What is that for?
We have multiple lift station. I know we have one out by KFC. We have.
The one out by UPS is one that we're focusing on to be able to rebuild that lift station.
Is that what these funds, this allocation is?
I believe that one's the KFC lift station.
Okay, that's what I was just curious about. Thank you.
I'll double check. It may be the UPS, but I'll double check that for you.
Any questions, comments? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, and Councilwoman Harrison, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Counselman Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. And this does have an emergency, so I need a motion in a second on the emergency. Motion, Counselman Brown. Second, Counselman Pritchard, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Counselman Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number two, consider impossible action on approval of certain costs related to fire department funds to be used from the City of McAllister Fire Department portion of the county quarter sent excise tax for fire services. Assistant Chief Brooks, and congratulations.
Yes, thank you, sir. Assistant Chief Bean Brooks, Chief Brooks cannot be here tonight. He asked me to step in for him seeking approval for purchase of new firefighter bunker gear, which will be used from the city's portion of the county firefighter tax not to exceed $12,000. This is a replace gear that's getting old and worn out. That's all revolving replacement plan and the purchase new gear for two new firemen we have.
Any questions, comments?
Mayor? What do you guys do with the old gear? Is that, do you just throw it away or is it usable?
No, it's not usable. Most of it is worn out. There is a date as far as why it's allowed to use it. Once it reaches that date, you cannot use it. Nothing else, yeah.
Dispose of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens. Second, Counselman Brown, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselman Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
We're on to agenda item number three, consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of $141,950 from Collins Waterworks LLC for Section A, 30-inch McAllister Lake raw water relocation, and authorizing the mayor to sign the notice of award for the raw water main and transmission water main improvement, Section A. Mr. Burke?
Mayor Brown?
Well, counsel. These, the next two items on the agenda, we bid at the same time. Okay, the Section A contract was the 30-inch line that's on top of the McAllister Lake Dam. It's been filling, I mean, almost all the time, I guess. But anyways, we went out to bid. We're going to replace that line. We had five contractors that elected to bid the project. The low bidder was Collins Waterworks. And for $141,950, our recommendation is to award it to them.
Yeah, City Manager?
I'd also like to add that this is time and material. This is labor. The other portion of this project, we, the city purchased all of the pipe and all of the related connections and valves for this earlier. We had a price of about $140,000. So this entire project, it's about $280,000, $290,000 to replace that pipe on the dam.
Any questions? Counselwoman Harrison?
I've got one. Could you, just for my knowledge, explain what exactly is raw water?
Raw water is water that hadn't been treated yet, so it's basically lake water.
Oh, it's not waste or anything?
No, it's not waste or anything. It's what's the water that gets transmitted to the water treatment plant to where it goes under the process, it gets treated for drinkable water.
All right, but this is before it's treated?
This is before.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Pritchard?
How much would this have cost if the city staff would have done it?
If city staff would have done it, we would have saved the $141,950. We do not have the capability, once we lost our utility superintendent, to be able to put this project to completion.
Well, you say it would have cost that, but I mean, it would have, how long would have taken us to do it then, I guess? Do you think?
In-house?
Yeah.
We would have to have been committed to it. We would have to look at timing would be the biggest issue. You're probably looking at two to three weeks to complete this project. So we've got to do it in an off-season when we're not having a lot of breaks on our internal water system. I mean, we've got to, once you commit to this, you got to go.
Okay, I'm good. Collins Waterworks, have we worked with them before?
Yes, they have worked for the City of McAllister before.
Okay.
One of the, councilman, if I could, one of the requirements of the bidding documents was that they had to have worked with large diameter pipe in the past because this is 30-inch pipe. This is big stuff.
And it's very big. Excuse me. And what we did is we went through a pre-approval process to make sure that the contractors that bid on the project were qualified.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Counselman Pritchard, second, Councilwoman Harrison, any further discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Counselman Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number four, consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of $162,500 from Built Right Construction LLC for Section B, Talawanda Dam 20-inch water main, and authorizing the mayor to sign notice of award for the raw water main and transmission water main improvement, Section B. Pretty well covered it already, didn't you?
Yeah, this is, this is the 20-inch line that goes down through the old water plant, which is down below Talawanda Dam. We have had some major leaks down there and actually ran the town out of water a few times. So we're getting all that old line out from below the dam and bringing it up on top of the dam so that we can maintain it. This is for labor and materials, where the other one was just for labor.
And this, the big outage that we had, I guess it was last year, that's, this section that we're replacing is where that occurred.
That's correct.
So, and from what I understand, we didn't even really even know what was down there when it came to doing this, and some of the valves in that area were welded.
That's correct.
So it's something.
And we're going to be capping that line off. As part of this project, we're going to cap off the line. Then that goes through there, yes.
Great. Counselwoman Harrison?
I've got one quick question. Is this pretty much age-related? Is it because it's old? Is it weather-related combination? What?
It's age-related, yes, ma'am.
And how old?
It was put in there when the old plant, I don't know when the old plant was done. I mean, the new plant was built in 1982. And then this plant was wore out before they built that plant. So we're talking about a very, very old structure.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Pigeons.
Everywhere.
Yeah. Lost my train of thought. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'd take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Counselman Brown, second, Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Courage, call the roll, please.
Counselman Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number five, consider an act upon acceptance of the bid from Lambert Mechanical Incorporated, the amount of $45,500, and authorizing the mayor to sign a service agreement to replace the air conditioning system for the white acre room at the McAllister Library. Mr. Burke?
Good evening, Mayor, council. The seven-ton air conditioning system that services the white acre room in the library was installed in 1971. So it's about 48 years old or so. It's reached a point where it's increasingly difficult to repair. It needs to be replaced. Bid requests were sent out to vendors. Lambert Mechanical came back with a bid of $45,500.
I've been in that white acre room when it's either 150 degrees or 20 degrees. So whatever, whatever we've got isn't working, I can tell you that. Okay?
Right now, it's about 95 degrees.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Boy, I really hate to bring this up because I know it is very hot right now, being in August. But is there another way we could have got more bids involved with this? We've only, let me say it like this. I hate to bring this up with it being the hottest time of the year and they don't have air conditioning that's functioning properly. But I also look at it and think that what if this bid is $15,000 more than the closest one and we could use more money to improve our library? Not to say the city staff's a bad joker, I'm just curious to why.
There were seven bids solicitation sent out to a variety of vendors. Unfortunately, only one returned a bid that was within, well, there was only one bid received back and that was Lambert Mechanical.
Okay.
There was, in my opinion, due diligence. When you send out seven bids to reputable people, and as somewhere in here I can find it, tell you, we went out quite a ways to find them.
Counselman, excuse me, Counselman Pritchard?
Just from reading through the bid package, it seems, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems really expensive to me. Were you surprised? What did you expect? Do we have a budget for this project?
We did not. This is a failure, okay? So this is considered to be an emergency situation. We're having trouble getting parts. We can't. It's no longer feasible for us to repair this equipment. It is 48 years old. When you start looking at these units and start questioning the size of them, I can tell you the one that's right out this window that this pigeon's sitting on right now.
He's hot.
Is $16,000, which only takes care of this section of this building. This piece right here, we're talking about a large section of this library. And this equipment is worn out. It's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not questioning that we need the new equipment. I'm just, when I saw the technical specs on here, and I'm not an HVAC contractor by any means, but I was surprised at the price. It seems too high to me. But I do have a question. When, if we accept this bid tonight, when will the work begin? Is that in the packet?
I don't believe it's in the packet. We've got to get the insurance, the other documents. Normally, in a situation like this, they'll order the equipment. You're looking at two to four weeks to start a project like this.
I guess, I guess especially thinking two to four weeks. I am of the opinion that we should rebid this project. I mean, if we just think about the calendar here, you know, best-case scenario, this happens in two weeks. We're the first of September. And if it's four weeks, we're the middle part of September. And so we're not going to provide much temperature relief in that building anyway. And I think, just as you think about this business a little bit, it's going to slow down for these HVAC contractors. I think that's partially why maybe we didn't get any bids back is because they all got a lot of stuff to do because everybody's air conditioners are broken. So I think we would be wise to rebid it, but that's just, that's just me.
Counselman, if I could, I would like to ask the head librarian to come forward for a minute and talk to us about the condition of the library and what they've been having to deal with for the last 60 to 90 days at that facility and what they're trying to do with the children in this community and be able to offer services to them and the inability to offer those services.
Ellen Barlow, I'm the branch manager at McAllister Public Library. We do provide a service to the community, not just the children, but adults. And this is our main meeting room. Also, during the winter months, we didn't have any heat. As the mayor mentioned earlier, he's talked about it being very cold in there. This unit, there was an attempt to repair it right at the beginning of our summer season because it was starting to get hot, that it worked less than a day. It fell apart again. And as I've been told, it cannot be patched anymore. Because not having that room, our services have, we've had to be very creative. And it has, to service the children and our normal programming, we have dropped in numbers because of space. We've had to do it on the open floor, which, when you have magicians and animals and reading programs and storytimes come out in the middle of the floor, it hinders the rest of your business because of the amount of people. I've seen 150 people in a section smaller than where the councilmen are now sitting. And just crammed in there just to be part of the program. We also provide with the assistance of the friends of the library and also the public school system lunches during summer. At least one meal that provides for children who might possibly go without one during the summer months. And they've had to eat in the foyer with people coming by and wanting to know why they couldn't get a lunch if they weren't under 18. And it just challenges. And I would like to commend my staff that they were very creative, very helpful, and having to move furniture, break down constantly to provide services so we didn't, we could, didn't have to cancel any. We kept them going. But we did severely, and also have to turn away possible people who could have used the room because we just didn't have it. Any questions? Yes?
I'm a regular patron, so I know what you're talking about, not me either, just that room. Is this air conditioner, is it a dual? Is it heat and air or is it just air? Oh, so it's going to be combination, it's going to be dual?
Well, last year, we, or during the winter months, we dealt with space heaters and with children around. That's not something you really want to do.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Thank you.
I commend you for doing that because it's no fun. Anything when it's very hot, I understand that. Did I understand you that this has been going on for like 90 days or more?
Yes, we went through the winter months. The warmest we could get in there was in the 50s. And when it was just so cold, we could not use it, the room, again.
Did you guys contact the city during this time?
Absolutely. Yes.
Why didn't we do this like 90 to 120 days ago?
Because we went out and looked at different contractors for quotes because we didn't know that it was going to be this expensive by the time we started getting a couple of quotes in. And I can tell you, we had two quotes prior to this bidding process. One was $54,000 and I can't remember what the second one was. So, once we realized that we were over $25,000, we had to put together an entire bid package, put that out, advertise it, and go through the bidding process that is part of our city or code.
Yeah, so, so if I may, because I'm, I was, I feel for what this library is going through. It makes me feel a little bit better to hear that we've explored this option, not the city staff does. And I think you guys do a phenomenal job.
We have, councilman.
But I want to make sure that we're spending the money wisely like the taxpayers and charges do. So we feel that this is a good value, Mr. Horne?
Yes.
At $45,000 with the only bid that we have?
They're dealing with a dual unit. There's going to be two units that are approximately, I think, around 42,000 BTUs.
Come up to the mic when you speak, please.
Like I said, we did have quotes that were higher.
I understand that this is not a matter of, we don't want to support. I just want to make sure that we're getting the best value because the dollars that we spend there, we can do more if we save money. So that's what I'm asking.
So, Mr. Horne, I'm assuming that none of us up here have a really great idea of how much this stuff costs. In your, in your professional opinion, would you say this is within the reasonable range for this?
Yes, I'd say it's within the reasonable range.
$100 to show up at your house. It's $100 for them to show up at your house. And this is, this is commercial, so it's probably $5,000 to show up.
I've got one last question. In addition to losing some of your business because you couldn't use that, also, did you lose some funds? Because if you rent a private room, that means you also lost some income too. Is that correct?
It can. I had a gentleman come today who wanted to use one of the rooms and he said, when you get your air fixed, I'll be back. If he doesn't find another option in town.
Thank you.
Counsel Brown?
Has this been going on for just a short period of time or is it a long-term problem?
I've been with the McAllister Library for 10 years this last month. And when I first started working, I remember there was a summer that the air went down. We stayed open as long as it was below 90 degrees. And I got to wear shorts that day and a T-shirt. And, and high-power fans blowing, and it really felt like you were in a sauna.
So 10 years had been the problem?
Well, often on, the building is 50 years old. And as he said, the HV unit that we're talking about, just one part of it, is 48 years old. Is that correct?
It's installed in '71.
That was a good year. That was a good year.
I was still in high school.
I was too. Right away in seventy-one.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
Young bucks.
Is there a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make it, I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Brown, second by Counselwoman Harrison. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Counselmember Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I wonder how long it's going to take them to get on it and get it going.
I have a feeling after this discussion we've had, they're going to get on it pretty quick. We're on to agenda item number six. Consider and act upon to confirm the appointment of representatives to serve on the local Economic Advancement and Development Committee. Mr. Reidenhour.
Evening, Mayor and Council. During the last meeting, y'all may remember appointing several, several members to the Economic Development Council. There were two at-large members that were not appointed at this time. We have two members from the community that are willing to serve, and I think the mayor is wanting to appoint, or nominate, I guess. I'm here for, to answer questions.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion and a second?
I do have a question.
Counsel, no, good, Counselman Pritchard.
How are these, who, are the, who selected these names?
I, I selected Red and Mr. Capers was recommended to me. So basically, I nominate and you guys approve.
Was this done at all with, was this something that the committee discussed at the first meeting at all?
No. Although I will tell you, the, both members were in attendance, non-voting, just so they could get an idea of what the first meeting was.
I've got a question. How does this lead committee, how is it different from like a steering committee or a stakeholder? What, kind of tell us, if you don't mind, we'll brief you.
It's, it's an advisory committee on economic development for the city of McAllister. And it's brand new, so.
All right. And it's basically volunteer?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We've had similar things in the past, some, some successful, some less than successful. But this is, this is the, a new try, I guess is another way to put it. Since I nominated them, I'll make a motion to, to approve them. Is there a second?
I'll send.
Counsel Brown, any further discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Counselmember Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. We are on to agenda item number seven. Consider and act upon acceptance of a revision on a lease between the city of McAllister and Girl Scouts of Eastern Oklahoma. Authorize the mayor to sign the revision. Mr. Pritchard.
Mayor, Council. Staff is recommending to the council that they approve a revised lease with the Girl Scouts of Eastern Oklahoma. We signed a lease with the Girl Scouts in two thousand and six for the entire chain park, so they could build their building in one section of it. And now, through mutual agreement, we've decided that they just would like to have that one southeast corner for their building and give the park back, you know, to the parks departments to, so we'll just, you know, take over the mowing. We do have plans to build an additional backstop in that park. And we have a need for backstops because our, our boys' club teams, softball and baseball teams, don't have enough places to practice. So we'll put an additional backstop there, which I believe we had, we have a benefactor for. It's going to pay for that, backstop and benches. We also have plans to put an additional backstop in Hudson Park, where we used to have one. So we're going to, in the future, we'll, we'll build an additional backstop over there.
Played a lot of softball on Chaney Field.
Yeah, me too.
Is there any questions or comments? Counselwoman Harrison.
Was there any reason that none of the Girl Scout leaders were here to represent their part of this this evening? They get an invitation, or they just left it to you?
Yes, they did. They signed a lease and they were good with it.
Oh, okay, all right. And how long did they have that building?
Two thousand and six is when we signed that lease with the Girl Scouts.
Oh, okay.
They built their building there then.
So are you saying that it's now over as of this meeting, or it was over when you signed the contract the other day?
That's when the mayor signs the new lease.
I think you might, that they will still have the building and they will still have that.
Oh, yeah, that's their building, they'll still have the building.
Oh, okay, all right.
And they'll still have use of the park. They can use it, yeah, they want to use it for their programs. It's right in the back door.
They still can utilize the park.
Absolutely. That won't change at all.
All right, thank you.
And I'm assuming they approached us as far as this instead of us asking them?
No, actually, I approached them.
Did you?
Yes.
Counselman Pritchard, did you?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Take motion, second, motion, Counselman Pritchard, second vice mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Counselmember Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. You got this one as well?
I am, I'm here.
We are on to agenda item number eight. Consider and act upon a resolution adding a full-time position to the recycle center, of recycle center worker to the city's workforce.
Staff's also recommending that we, council approve a resolution to add a full-time city employee to the recycle center. The recycle center has been a big hit with our citizens. Sometimes the volume overwhelms the staff that's there. And I think having a city employee, they will be a big-time benefit to the city and to the citizens who are recycling.
And, and doing this, we will, we will continue to have the KaiBoi's workers there as well.
KaiBoi's workers will continue to be there, yeah, we'll still, still have to have them there.
Right, so and I just want to make sure we weren't.
No, no, we're not disparaging them.
Right.
They got a lot of people there that love, love what they do.
Yeah, it's, it's a benefit for.
It is.
A number, in a number of ways.
Yeah, it's a joy to go over and watch some of those guys working over there.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor.
Are there funds already available for this, for this slot?
Yes.
Funds available for, for this position already?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I was going to address, Mayor, is the funds.
Were you making a motion or were you questioning?
I was going to ask that question.
All right, is there a motion and a second?
Oh, my goodness.
Motion, Counsel Brown, second Counselwoman Harrison. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Counselmember Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to agenda item number nine. Discussion of Possible Action on Directing City Staff to Research Contract Options For More in Highways, Ride-A-Ways, and Other Miscellaneous Properties That Are Currently the Responsibility of City Parks and Recreation Department. This is going to be you, Vice Mayor Stevens.
Basically, what kind of brought this kind of to light was some discussions that we ended up having as well, me and the city manager about kind of basically all the responsibilities our, our parks and recreation departments have. And I think as Mr. Pretty's been up here several times this evening discussing things, they do a lot more than just, than just do what they've been doing. They help with the recycling center. They have lots of things that they do. They deal with the, the games that our, our kids are out there playing. They do fun events in the park for the rest of the community. So in going along with that and talking that, we also, I also found out from the city manager that they actually mow a lot of our highway all summer long, and a lot of our rideaways and two-seventy and lots of other things. So in having those discussions, it was brought up, possibly maybe we should consider letting them do what they do best instead of mowing highways all summer. Maybe we should allow them to work in their parks and develop our things, and especially as we have more parks. Case in point, where we had the Boys and Girls Club, where we're going to take over a lot of that mowing. We've got new landscaping and going in downtown. We have the addition of Harvest Park. Maybe we should bring them back in where they can focus on those things and possibly put this out to bid for a couple of different ways out on the highway mowing. Couple of different options that I have thought of, and city manager as well, and speaking to him, is that we could possibly, A, we could try to partner with the county some way. I know there was a newspaper article that came out here recently about trustworthy inmates. Possibly we could deal with them in some respect or line. Jackie Brandon is another one with, working with them. We have actually several different crews that we contract with them right now that are working in our community. And the third was actually out for private bid as well. So there's lots of different options I think that we could pursue here. This isn't necessarily something we have to do very quickly. I just think this is something to allow the city manager to put this out for bid and see if we can't possibly pursue this. I know in Muskogee, they have a gentleman up there that they've contracted with that does a lot of their mowing and taking care of theirs as well. And it's even something that as time goes on, we can maybe pursue some other creative avenues to do things out there on the highway that wouldn't require maybe as much mowing. So that, that's kind of the discussion I wanted to have and push us forward to, to approve this so we could have that, let our parks department mow and maintain our parks and then pursue having the things out there on the highway taken care of maybe possibly by somebody else.
Mr. Stevens.
With that intro, Mayor, what I'd like to do, if I could, I'd like to bring Sherman and, and Mr. Pretty up here. We've gathered some information about the number of acres that are out on our rideaways. Also, a list of, of kind of all the functions that our parks department does here in the city of McAllister. People, you know, as, as the vice mayor said, everybody thinks, well, maybe they just mow some parks and stuff like that. That's, that's almost the sideline of what they do is mowing of the parks. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pretty.
City manager stealing all my thunder here. That's fine.
Well, the vice mayor stole mine.
Well, we, Chairman put together a list of functions of the parks department, and there's twenty-seven functions on that list that we do on a routine, regular basis. And only two of those are mowing. Obviously, mowing is a huge part of it, but there are twenty-seven other regular functions that we take care of on a regular basis. We mow fifteen parks and nineteen other areas. Is, is an example of other areas, Newton Circle, the library, Water Towers, Hidden Valley, both the Armories, the list goes on and on. There, there's nineteen of them in addition to our fifteen parks that we mow on a regular basis. We also, now, that's just the parks. Now, we also mow all the city rideaways that need mowing, all the alleys that need mowing that are open. We go out to the Expo Center and do a lot of mowing out there. Now, the Expo staff does do some of their own mowing, but the rough mowing out there, we do that. Same thing with the softball complex, staff out there mows the fields, but we mow all the outlying areas at the softball complex. We mow two-seventy west from the West Street to the Turnpike. We mow both the rideaways and the center median on that highway. We mow the George Knight Bypass from the Highway Patrol Station out to Mount Mariah Road. We don't mow the center median there, the State Highway Department does that, but we mow all the rideaways along, along that highway. We mow South Main from Seneca out to the bomb display, and that's mainly on one side there where the railroad track is. Those three areas are three hundred and fifty-four acres of mowing. That, that highway mowing that we do are three hundred and fifty-four acres. It takes twenty days to complete a mowing cycle on the rideaways and alleys for our staff. It takes ten days to complete a mowing cycle on our parks and all these nineteen other areas that I mentioned. On the bypass out here, the George Knight Bypass, it takes probably a day to pick up and three days to mow. Day or two to pick up the trash and three days to mow it. Two-seventy west, we can usually mow that in a day and a half. And the South Main Highway, we can usually mow that in a day. So that just gives you an idea of, of the mowing that's done. Something I'd like to point out is there's an ordinance that exists today. It's ordinance twenty-four sixty-two. Basically, what it says, the property owners were responsible for the property up to the right away, I mean, up to the curb line, including the right away. I know our codes department is starting to enforce this, and it has helped some. But we, we can also include our alleys in this, which we mow a lot of alleys now. That can be included in this ordinance and enforced. So that would be a big help to us if more, more people mowed their own portion of their alley and their rideaways in front of their lots and houses.
Along that line, I have a question. Because if it's, if it's the property owner's responsibility and ODOT owns two-seventy and the L-sixty-nine and a lot of the places we're mowing, why is it their responsibility to mow it instead of ours?
Over, over the years, it, it's just like we are. You know, our funds are limited, our manpower is limited. A few years back, ODOT decided to, over the whole state, to give the municipalities, whether there's a major highway or a thoroughfare coming through, that they maintain, they gave it to the city to maintain.
I don't know if you can consider that a gift.
It's taking their burden away.
Did they, did they subsidize it at all?
No, no chemical, no funding for fuel or manpower. It's just the municipality's responsibility.
Sorry for interrupting.
Basically, my spiel. Did I miss anything?
Why don't, you know, you just mentioned it for a second about chemicals. Mention some of the things that we do around this city.
I've got a list.
I mean, share, share it with everybody so they enter. And, and one thing that I want to say here is keep in mind, this is seven individuals that are in this department.
Three inmates.
Yeah, we, we cover a lot of ground as far as fire ant control, which is becoming a big problem in southeastern Oklahoma anymore. We do bee control because we have had Africanized bee colonies, you know, close proximity to our communities. We do mosquito abatement, you know, throwing out dunks, and we fog for mosquita, adult mosquitoes to try to keep down the west Nile, which is present. You know, they've collected it in years past in McAllister, and we've had some residents that had west Nile. We have a, a big need in McAllister, and if by doing some of, taking some of the burden off from the mowing, we have a severe need for low-hanging limbs in McAllister because of emergency vehicles, you know, fire trucks, ambulances, trash pickup. The two thousand and, two thousand and seven ice storms damaged a lot of our trees on the right away, and they came back bushy. And most of the limbs go straight to the ground, obstructing almost every street in McAllister to some extent.
Sherman and I were talking today, we could keep three guys busy most of the time clearing limbs, encroaching in the rideaways and, and alleys and those, those sorts of things. It's, it's becoming a problem. Dead trees, cut down dead trees on the right way. You know, we take care of all the trees. We've got over three thousand trees we planted out there. We have to take care of them. We have to spray them, we have to mulch them, we have to trim them. Blind corners, we get lots of calls for blind corners, people can't see around the corner, we have to clear those. Of course, we inspect all our playground equipment on a monthly basis. We repair and maintain the surface areas, you know, with our engineered wood fiber or sand, whatever the case may be. Of course, we're the ones that, for the most part, put up Christmas decorations. Now with city manager's new program, we have some help from a bunch of other employees.
Give him one more, one more, you need one.
At this point, so, of course, they're not up in the bucket trucks hanging, hanging stuff on poles and that, all that, but.
Yelts help.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate it. We, of course, maintain, service all our equipment and make repairs that we can to the equipment that we don't have to take to the barn. We have herbicide applications. We do two-spraying, so post-emerge and pre-emerge herbicide applications every year. Install, maintain, trim landscape material in numerous city buildings and parks. We install and repair, maintain irrigation systems when needed. Work with the tree board, that tree planting and where they would like to see trees planted. Obviously, work with Pride of McAllister on a lot of different projects. And we work with the state and local organizations to try to be a part of McAllister. Cover the mowing part. We help other departments where they need help. It's, it's your mutual thing. They help us, we help them. We, you know, we work, work well together with all the departments. We clean sidewalks and street curbs with the trees. We mentioned the low-hanging limbs, that's part of that. Construct, install, maintain park structures and park amenities. Pick up litter in the parks, rideaways, year-round. System storm cleanup and snow removal, ice removal, and other duties as need. System storm cleanup and snow removal, ice removal and other duties as need.
And one other note, and it's a distinction for McAllister and the McAllister Tree Board and numerous nurseries that have donated nursery stock to the city of McAllister because we take great pride in our nursery stock and all that. But we've been a tree city USA for over 30 years. Now, that, that's a distinction that very few cities have in the state of Oklahoma. I think there's two others that are right there with us on that one. Out this air portion of the face, I'm pretty sure.
Ask Mr. Pretty about the cemeteries. Do you guys have to mow that? Is that?
That's a cemetery crew. That's not this crew.
Okay, so it's not your parks. And I got a job that I've taken away from the whole town. I'm catching raccoons over there by my house. I got about 10 of them. I'm having to catch them.
I've got five overdillas at mine under my deck.
I'm getting pretty good at it. Yeah, I can do it.
They're digging holes all over my backyard.
I'm getting pretty good at it.
You sure you're not catching the same one 10 times?
Well, no, no. I take them out to the lake and let them out unless they're beating me back home. Wasn't for them, I wouldn't have any visitors.
So I bring this up and I, and I know we've been joking and stuff, but I really do believe that this is a responsibility as us as a council that we can help provide help where it's needed in a way that it can provide our, our Parks Department to do what they do best. And they do a phenomenal job with all that you hear that they maintain and do, just like a lot of our city staff does. They work very hard at this. So that's why I wanted to bring this forward. I think it's a good decision for us. I think it could lead to maybe some other creative things. And as they continue to do more, maybe we can support the Parks Department doing some other things that beautify our city. Because as you saw with tonight, with the, with the comprehensive plan, a lot of that addressed different ways that our Parks Department plays, or really our parks play a huge role, pivotal role in how we do things and improving quality of life. So I think as we can do these things that although this mitigates mowing, which I think anybody that doesn't have to mow has a little bit better quality of life in August. I think that this is something that we can look at as a whole and go, these are some very small, manageable things that we can do as a council that can overall improve because as they can maintain more trees and we can plant more trees and we can water, especially, you know, I'm down in Mike D quite a bit down there in that, that area. There's a lot of trees down there that we haven't been able to replace yet. And I think a lot of that more or less has to do with, there's probably not enough time in the days. And, you know, I think about the trees we're getting ready to plant downtown and we've got Arvest Park coming on and different things like that. The, you know, where the Girl Scouts are at, that's going to take man hours and that's going to take time to keep it as beautiful as we maintain everything else. So I think removing this, allowing them to do that, and then you think about there's other things that I was asking, like with stormwater mitigation and things like that. We can couple, a couple of different departments and what we do and do it well, like we've been doing for a long time. We can add to that and create a very vibrant, beautiful city. We already have a really great community. This is something, a very small thing, I think that we can do that can help with that.
I think it's a great idea and just coming back, getting the, I guess the motion we would need would be to direct the staff to research the contract options and come back to us with, with.
One other, one other thing. We're starting our last, hopefully our last mowing cycle for right of ways and just our right of ways. Our last mowing cycle for the season. That would give us time through the winter so that maybe by spring, you know, we could have something implemented, possibly, you know. And every, all of the contractors and individuals that do participate in right of way mowing and on such a large scale are all tied up into their contract season right now. So it's.
It's going to be tough to get anybody.
Yes, right now. So if we could plan it.
Yeah, it'll give, give us, give us time to get, get the options that are available. Plus, if Mr. Pretty mentioned some other things that might be in the ordinance as far as alleys and things like that and coming back to the council with that. Councilman Richard.
I'm sorry, are we currently using any contract mowing or anything?
One, one contract mowing for coal miners and the Woburn Mora and Chatty Park. Yes, that's the only contract mowing we have.
I've got some, you, you said some things. I have some questions about, how many trees do you, have y'all planted?
We maintain over 3,000 trees that have been planted by the McAllister Tree Board in the last 29 years.
Do you have a map of all those trees? Really?
They were planted by the McAllister Tree Board.
It'd be, I'd love to see that on a map.
I would too. I'd like to GPS them all.
What are we going to do in your map when you lose your map?
The map's going fast.
Mr. Pretty, you talked about mowing the alleys. What do you mean? Like, aren't the alleys like, are, are they not paved?
No.
90% of them are.
But are they ones that people are like driving down or walking down?
Some of them.
Some of them are just, they just have utilities in them, you know, in the older part of town, third and fourth.
They're open alleys.
But do they, I mean, so if you looked at them, does it look like somebody's yard?
No, it looks like a pasture.
Most of them, you know, fence, they're behind the fence.
Generally, they're 20 feet wide.
Yeah.
Generally. And in certain places, they're used for brush dumps, house trash. We have to clean everything out before we can mow it.
Bed springs, you name it, it's out there. Micycles.
I saw a mattress in the Chatty Park dumpster last weekend.
Yeah, I saw that one.
That's why, that's why with the ordinance, it's saying up to and including the abutting right of way. So that could be construed as, as half of the alley, you know, as property, you know, the abutting property out to the street curbs. And that would eliminate us having to enter those alleys with, with our equipment.
We've damaged equipment in some of those alleys.
Basically, Mayor, basically what I see a lot is that people can mow the alleys themselves, but they don't. So and they have to, and they wait till the city comes through.
Because they always have.
Yeah.
It always has come down there with their mower. So they just let it go.
All right, right.
Maybe two questions. During the winter weather, you said you tried to get caught up on things that you couldn't do during the summer. And the other thing, where's PSO on this? You talked about trees. Do they come and do anything or how does that work?
PSO, they have been contributors to us planting trees before. The, where the right of way easement is underneath the power lines, they come through on this last cycle. They do a five year cycle and they have done a lot. They've helped us out in some of the alleys that were pretty overgrown, but they were mainly taking out what was underneath the power lines. So.
We don't work when we're doing a dead tree. If it's under a power line, we yield to, we yield to PSO. We don't get around power lines.
And they don't build a city. That's something that's on there.
That's theirs. If it's our lines are running on their reasons.
Any, any other questions? If I might, what is the best way for us to make this motion, Pete, so far as putting this out for bid?
Just make, make a motion for the staff to put together a bid package to look at. We'll address the right of ways first and foremost, basically put together a plan and then look at putting out a bid package.
If I may then, I'd like to make a motion for city staff to put together a bid plan addressing the highways, right of ways and other miscellaneous properties throughout the city to be put out for a big package.
Can I just ask you about the alleys? We want to include them because we wouldn't be bidding them, but we would be making that part of the.
That, that would be fine, but I think that with what they brought up as well, might not be a bad idea to look at that ordinance too. So I'm okay with that language with maybe the understanding that that might could change.
Is there a second? Second Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? Coach, call the roll please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, guys. We are on to new business. Any manner not known that, or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section 311.9 Title 25 Oklahoma State statutes. Do we have any new business?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, so we're on City Manager's report.
The only thing that I wanted to talk about just for a few minutes tonight is the asphalt paving machine. It is under warranty. It is in the shop in Tulsa and it's being taken apart right now. We have some problems with the conveyor belt. So last week, we were able to do asphalt overlays on 15th Street between Comanche and Kiowa, 16th Street between Comanche and Kiowa and Kiowa connecting between 15 and 16. The machine went down at that time. It's been shipped off. We don't have a date for it to be returned. I would imagine this could be another week or so and then we'll go back to the list. The street crew has turned their attention down to Arvest Park. They installed one of the sidewalks yesterday and today. They'll be finishing the sidewalk on Second Street and doing some curbing. And at that point, we'll be ready to sod that park and basically just mow going forward. That'll be the conclusion of Arvest Park this year. This is phase one. Phase two will be next year. Phase three will be the following year. So that's where we're at. We'll be wrapping that, that park up and then moving back to asphalt overlays.
Remarks and inquiries by council?
I don't really have any, any remark. I've always got a remark. I don't ever shut up, I feel like. But, so I've got a couple of things I just want to let the other council members know. Couple of things that I'm going to start exploring more and if anybody else would be interested as well, I'd be happy to have you involved with it too. One is the ordinance for turning on our water here at the city. I think after seeing, I know that we've discussed this before and I've discussed it with city staff about how the, there's difficulties at times, especially as frankly, I sell a house and I have people that, I had a situation recently where you have to be there to turn the water on and/or have licenses and things like that. Well, the husband was in Hawaii with the military and then he was also traveling overseas. So he was, they were not able to turn the water on because the property was deeded to both the husband and wife. So the sellers then had to agree that basically, hey, we'll leave the water on so you can live there until your husband gets here two months from now. So there's some things there that I think we could do and I constantly get calls on this after I sell on, I sell a house and clothes on it that we can address there to maybe make it a little bit easier for our citizens to get the water turned on in their name, especially after hearing that we're sending some of this stuff to collection now. I think we can mitigate that and make that much easier on city staff to get the water in there. So I'm going to, was talking to the city manager about that. We're going to work on that. The other thing was something that got brought up easily tonight was the recycling center. I think it's a huge push for our community. It's constantly full. I go and drop stuff off there all the time. And so does my wife's business and it never fails that when you pull up there, there's two or three people in front of you or somebody leaving that just dumped a bunch of things. So I think this is something our community is showing by the amount of frankly garbage that we recycle. That I think it's something that we do want to see here as a community. I've reached out to city staff as well and I think we're going to, from when I say I think, we're going to pursue maybe getting some more information. I know they've done this in the past on what it would be like to have herbicide recycling here as a community and how much that would be as a cost and it benefits and things like that. So we're going to explore that. And then the last one is just, Pete, if you wouldn't mind, at some point, could you have a presentation for us that you would just kind of refresh what the stormwater fee is for?
Oh, absolutely.
The stormwater, just, and I know that we've been doing lots of different projects, but just give us some examples and some things that we have for the future. I know that we've got a master plan.
We do.
That we're working on. If, if you could have that, just some time in the next several months. I, I would just, I would like a refresher on that because I know that we've been doing lots of different projects.
We're pretty proud of what's being accomplished through our stormwater fee and we, it would be great to bring all that information to you and what package, what we've done and where we're heading. All that, that'd be wonderful.
And that's it? Thank you.
Councilman Brown?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Harrison?
I've been invited to tour the McAllister Regional Health Center and I'll be doing that this week.
Pete, City Manager, where, can you talk us, talk to us about the project or the progress on the streetscape project on Chautauqua?
Certainly. Phase one is completed. Phase two is completed. Basically, everything from Main Street to First Street is done. And the permanent striping was actually put on it on Sunday. So if you go down there, you can see that. This next phase is a two week process, two to three week process from First Street to Second Street. One of the things that we did notice yesterday is there is a huge area, that is a big area that is blocked off to all the retail business. One of the things after they complete demolition over the next day or two, they're going to be opening up a couple of areas so that we can access those businesses. They'll put maybe steel plates down, something like that. But you're probably three weeks out on that, on that side that they're working on right now. They'll cross over two to three weeks on the other side.
You mean to the north side?
To the north side. Yes, sir.
And then is that, do you anticipate that that side is going to take it the same amount of time as the south side?
Same amount of time, yes, sir.
And is that the end of the project?
It is. And we're done. So you're probably six weeks out, eight weeks out.
We anticipate that the next two blocks will go faster than the first two. There should be fewer problems. The contractor has said four weeks per block, both the south and the north side. We're hoping to be quicker than that, but I would hate for something to come up and promise a shorter timeline and not deliver on that. So assume four weeks per block.
So we can have the Halloween, the Chunk or Treat downtown can be the grand opening?
Should be close.
You know, one of the. 10 weeks from now.
One of the nice things about where we're at in this section between First and Second Street is, is you've only got two bump outs in that section. Then when you cross over, you've only got one bump out on the corner of Second Street because we completed the one on First Street several years ago. So it's more just infrastructure and pigeons.
Good. It sounds like we're going to hit our deadline. Also, City Manager, how are we doing on the CFO search? How's that going?
I signed an offer letter today for the CFO's position and we expect to hear back from them tomorrow or Friday, tomorrow or Thursday.
I know, I'm sure it'll be, I'm sure the city staff will be happy to have that position.
Absolutely.
And same question about the, and I may get this job title wrong, the utility supervisor.
Correct.
Right title. Have we filled that position yet?
We have not. We actually interviewed another individual on Monday. We have possibilities and it may be a combination of what we have currently working for the city and bringing somebody new in. We haven't quite figured out how to position those, those two spots, but we have two very qualified individuals at this time.
Good. And my last thing is the Denton area TIF is going to have, or review committee is going to meet in here August 30th, which is a Friday at noon, if anybody wants to come. If you don't want to come, that's also what it is.
Thank you.
Mayor's comments and appointments. I went last week and met with the Oklahoma Municipal League talking about disorderly House law. And the determination was that it should be done by ordinance instead of by statute. I don't agree with her, with, with that necessarily because I think the city of McAllister has the resources for any legal issues that come, could come from something like this. But if Hartz IV in Oklahoma was to put something like this in and the ACLU came after them, they couldn't, they wouldn't have the resources to deal with it. But nonetheless, their recommendation was go with an ordinance as opposed to a statute. And I did find out that there are other cities that currently have this statute. So the OML is going to contact them to get them, get a list of them to send to me so that we could, we could look, look over it. Jamie and Chief Wansick and our paralegal and I all met on this once and kind of did a little bit of an outline of what we're looking at. It's still, it's still very raw. We're nowhere near being done with it, but it is moving forward. And one of the things that we're, that, one of the more difficult things about it is building in the protections that need to be built in. I mean, because it's, it's easy to, to tear a house down, you know, but you want to make sure that when you do that, somebody's not, you're not going to have unintended consequences. That's, that's moving forward. The bike, bicycle registration, Chief Wansick and our paralegal are working on that. We have some old ordinances that need to be amended or adjusted or even finally removed. I think, I think one of them is you have to have a license, essentially a license plate on your bicycle. So those, once, once that's all cleaned up and ready to go, that'll be coming forward and we should be moving, moving forward with that. So with that, that's all I've got. I take, we'll recess the council meeting. I take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority. The motion to include approval of minutes from July 23rd, 2019, regular meeting in McAllister Airport Authority. Confirm action taken on Agenda Item B and to adjourn. Motion Vice Mayor Stevens, Second Councilman Brown, any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I'd now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from July twenty-third, twenty-nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item B, one, three, four, and to adjourn. Motion, motion, Councilman Brown, second Councilman Pritchard, any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll reconvene the council meeting. I take a motion to adjourn. Everybody wants to stay? Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchard?
Yes. Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.